Council, today is September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time's now six P. M. Thank you to those joining us here in council chambers and to those joining us online. We're happy to have you with us. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Matt Mitchell and Council Brandon, Councilwoman Brandon Stein will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Will you join me in prayer? God in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and for all the many blessings that we have in our lives. Lord, we, what a blessing it is when we have people who feel called to lead in different ways and in the giftings that you have given them, and we thank you for this group that is here today. Lord, we ask that you would give them the grace that they need to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before you in all that they do and all that they say here today. Well, we want to honor you, and so we ask that you would be honored in this time through all that we, as a community, do. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
I have two amendments. First is an amendment to item eight J on the consent agenda, amending the resolution to include an additional circuit for Internet services at twenty-nine thirty-five Pascagoula Street, which is the rec center. Also amending consent agenda to add item eight L, which is a resolution advertising resources regarding the use of the trolley for the RCS homecoming parade.
I have a proposed amendment as well to have the approval of the city's continuing disclosures engagement with the local state firm.
Will that be under your time, Mr. Moore?
I was gonna offer under consent.
Consent, that's good. Very good, let's do that. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. First item of business this evening is we have one proclamation. The proclamation is proclaiming the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five as Constitution Week. We have some representatives from that group? Join us, please.
Good evening. Welcome. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight anniversary of the signing of the Constitution by the Constitutional Convention and provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of the framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities they afforded us in this unique document. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas the Duchess Duke Chauvin chapter of the Dallas American Revolution, V.A.R., nationwide, will be featured this week in honor of the United States Constitution. And whereas I, Jay Willis, Mayor of the City of Pascagoula, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five as Constitution Week in the City of Pascagoula, and ask our citizens to reflect on the many benefits of our federal constitution and the privileges and the responsibilities of American citizenship, and to proudly display the American flag. Thank you, ladies.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, one, two, three, four. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, we have the address, the council section. The one item tonight is a presentation by the Pascagoula Recreation Commission. Mr. Larson, you want to introduce this topic?
Yes, sir. We have the representative from the Pascagoula Rec Commission here to discuss the bid regarding the bid for the two thousand twenty-eight Dixie Youth World Series. Mr. Powell's here tonight.
Good evening, y'all.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. I'm gonna ask for James and Mike to join me up here real quick. They were gonna try to get out of it, but it's not happening tonight. So as many of y'all know, we sent two teams to the World Series this summer, and all placed fourth and seventh overall out of twenty-four teams for each division. With that, Pascu Youth Baseball was looking at hosting the Dixie Youth World Series once again after a twenty-year hiatus of not hosting it since two thousand and eight. During that time that we were at this, at the national meetings, we showed interest in once again hosting a World Series here in Pascagoula. With that comes several commitments from the city and the county that we have to get, letters of commitments for us to be able to propose a hosting site for Dixie Youth Baseball. We need to go ahead and get that done and with y'all, but before we can get that done, we need a commitment from the city and some additional things that we need built out at the, out the complex. One of the major things that we've had and that we need to have built out there are press boxes. We cannot host anything higher than a state tournament without press boxes out at the, at the sports complex. I've already met with Justin, Mike, and James about the costs associated with that, and so if we look at all seven fields, we're looking at a cost around between a hundred and fifty and, let's say, two hundred thousand dollars are rough estimates that James has come up with.
Correct.
Okay. So that'd be for all seven fields. Air-conditioned, it'd be a six-by-ten press box, same facade and everything else as, as the facility that we have out there now. That'd be the first phase of it, and then have an additional meeting room on, right outside the gates for our umpires meeting and for Dixie Youth officials and all to be hosted there as well, which during the regular season can also be used for baseballs and any other tournament directors that need a conference room, because the conference room that's kinda over there in the softball side is smaller than what we need, and so we need something a little bit larger and all, and that estimated cost for that building is at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. That is not something that is right off the bat needed and required by Dixie Youth Baseball for us to be able to host, but the press boxes, I mean, the, the score boxes, the score booths are. Mike is on board with it. James has got the proposals and all, and what we're looking at, Dixie Youth, I have to have a letter of intent to host by, for the two thousand twenty-eight World Series to them by April, and that, with that letter of intent comes with letters from the city of endorsement, and that those things that we need will be built by, within sixty days of the tournament hosting in two thousand twenty-eight, so it gives us about two and a half years to get everything done. But like I said, for us to do that, I gotta have a letter from the city, and I gotta have a letter of support from the county as well, and that will do it. Because one of the biggest things that I saw while we were doing the World Series meetings down there, the majority of the proposals were coming actually from the rec departments of each city. So Laurel, Hattiesburg, Orangeburg, the, a lot of the other cities had their actual rec commission and a committee that was set up and doing the presentation, and so if we're gonna do a presentation, I gotta have the support from the city, and I hope to have the city be part of the overall board that would be for the Dixie Youth Baseball. I know Darcy sat on it, I believe, last time, or Amy did as well with, with the World Series that we hosted in two thousand and eight, so they're aware of the commitment that it takes and all. There's no monetary commitment, like a dollar amount of fifty thousand dollars or whatever else that the city has to, like, commit and all. That's where we go out and find sponsors and all, and, and with the commitment that we have there. So the economic impact of the last couple World Series that's been is either been between two-point-five million and three million dollars for those cities that have hosted in the last three years. So that's what you're looking at, and you're looking at between about thirty-six teams to forty-eight teams coming in here for a World Series that lasts an entire week. So, any questions, concerns?
Sounds exciting. Thank you for bringing that to us. And Mike, you're ready to move forward with that commitment?
We are, yeah.
Very good. Any questions from council?
Well, mostly, I just wanna, I was trying to write something down before I forgot it when we first started talking, and, but, so basically, you just need us to agree at this point, but we don't, we can sit down, still meet.
Oh, yeah.
Talk stuff out, and you need that final approval before, for a letter for in April, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then we don't have to build the actual facilities until sixty days. I mean, they have to be completed sixty days before the World Series.
Yes, ma'am. And Mike has been to all those meetings that we, we've had our state director down here, and he's been part of those meetings. He, they explained it to Mike as well. Their Dixie Youth Baseball is set to come in October tenth and meet with the board of directors of Pascu Youth Baseball and take a tour of the facilities, take a tour of the facility, and kinda give us that punch list and all, so then I have a better idea and a better punch list to actually give you before that letter is actually written, so then we can see the depth of it and we can really get some hardcore numbers of how much commitment and what we're gonna have to build and those type of things, because some of the things that are on the, the requirement list are not always adhered to at the other World Series, and I have those marked down and said, hey, listen, there's leeway in this. This is cost savings and all, like, the telephone in between the dugouts and the press boxes, it just has to be walkie-talkies. It doesn't necessarily have to be those hard lines, and it doesn't have to be an intercom system. It talks about, like, cameras and live streaming and all. Now Dixie Youth Baseball takes care of that. They actually have a sponsorship of Big League U that does that, so that's no longer something that we have to, we have to do, so those are a lot of those on those punch lists. So the president of D Y B is coming down along with a couple of national directors on December tenth, so if any of y'all would like to attend those meetings, just let me know, and I'll make sure that you're there. I know Matt will probably be there along with the rest of our board, as will we meet with them. So if you have any questions.
December tenth?
October tenth.
Oh.
October tenth.
Okay.
October tenth.
At first, I thought you said October, and then I thought you just said December.
No, no, no. October tenth, sorry. October tenth. Yeah, so October tenth, they'll be here and all to get a, kind of a lay of the land and all. Like I said, we just rejoined Dixie Youth Baseball two years ago, so a lot of these guys have not been back here on the coast since that two thousand and eight World Series, and so they're looking, all they remember is the old Gibson Field Flanagan and all that, and so when they see what we have now, they're like, oh, we have to go back there. So when we, when they saw us there and that we were showing interest, they're excited because, one, there hasn't been a World Series on a, on a Gulf Coast or on a coast at all since we last hosted it, and, two, it'll be our twentieth anniversary since we last hosted, so.
Very good. Any other questions?
No, I just, I'm excited about it, but definitely wanna talk through it. I know it's quite a process, and just to, you know, kinda get refreshed on what that process looks like and how we might potentially, you know, come up with the funding for those press boxes, and I'd just like to talk more, but it's, I think it's an exciting opportunity for us.
Do you wanna tell them kinda the, what we were thinking about with the funding aspect of it, or?
No.
We'll hold that later.
Yeah.
We have ideas and everything, but we, we looked at several things, and especially James did, when, when looking at, like, the building of the press box, we just looked on, talking building on top of the concession stand, that's one-point-four million dollars per, I mean, for both of them and all, so one-point-four million dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars, no-brainer. So what's, what's easiest for you, most economically?
And those are estimates. We're still have to go out and get a true price of what they cost. James is similar, what they have done in the past with other buildings, he got a price that way, so take grand assault, it's just an estimate.
And if you need kind of a, what it's gonna look like, you can go to Biloxi and look at how their field are set up with their concession, I mean, not except with the press boxes and all, that's kinda how, what we're, what we're looking at. Something holds three to four people, air-conditioned it has to be, and then it's, it's enclosed, door, window out front and all. So simple, to the point.
Same break, matches everything.
Yep.
I see, yeah, we definitely wanna keep with the aesthetic that we have. Keep that consistent.
We're, we're proud of our youth baseball facilities in Pascagoula. We wanna see them utilized. I think that's great.
Yep.
Absolutely.
All right, thank y'all for your consideration.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, too.
We're pleased to provide an opportunity at each meeting for comments by citizens limited to three minutes of speaking time per speaker, and no more than a total of thirty minutes. Public comment section of the agenda is not a question-and-answer session. The mayor, council, and administration officials will take all comments under advisement, may respond or take other potential action at a later time if warranted. Tonight, we have five citizens signed up to speak tonight. First will be Ms. Rose Holloman. Ms. Holloman, if you'll stand up.
Good evening. I am representing Rose Holloman with her written permission. And essentially, Ms. Rose is a senior citizen, and she's writing to you about how she feels about the proposed annexation. She does live just north of the Franklin Creek area, which is outside of the annexation, but the impact to her and her way of life is what concerns her. First, as she's not concerned about taxes, and the reason she's not concerned about taxes on her property is she is exempt. The other thing that she is concerned about is the vibe of the community, and she says where, where she lives, it is quiet and peaceful, and I want it to stay that way. One of my biggest concerns is traffic. As a senior citizen, I am extremely cautious around the intersections of Highway ninety, Franklin Creek, I-ten, and Independence. I fear if you encourage businesses in that area, traffic and congestion will greatly increase. I am also concerned about the people living in the woods and begging, like they do at Walmart and other shopping centers in the city. If I wanted to live inside a city with city traffic and other issues, I would have purchased inside of city limits long time ago and would have looked at Ocean Springs. Another concern is the change in our sheriff's deputy coverage. We had an issue and a deputy who is assigned to our area was off that day. The deputy who responded had to come from the Escataba area, and thankfully, we didn't need immediate attention, and it was not an emergency. It took him quite a while to respond. He told us he was filling in for the other deputy. He was so nice, and all it took was for him to speak with the other people to resolve our dispute. When I think of annexation, I think of how long it will take someone to respond in an emergency, if they always have to travel from outside of my area. She also says, I live on a modest income, I also think about water and sewer, and that would be ran in the future. I'm sure Pascagoula would want to expand further, after all, that was in the plan back in two thousand and ten. I live in a rural area most of my life, and while I do have maintenance, I do not have another monthly bill facing me in the form of water, sewer, and trash pickup. I do not believe you will offer any services I don't already have in place, nor do I foresee me needing any city offers, especially the possibility of more traffic and higher crime. That concludes Ms. Rose's comments.
Thank Ms. Holloman for us.
I will.
Next is Keith DeAngelo.
Again, I have written permission to speak on behalf of Mr. Keith DeAngelo.
So does Keith DeAngelo live in the annex?
He does not. He actually lives in the Escataba area, and he is speaking as a person who has, as I quote, "I am living proof of what happens when a city annexes an area and is unable to follow through on their commitments for improvements in services to what the city leaders perceive as an underserved area." The city he is referencing is Moss Point and their annexation of Escataba. As a longtime resident of Escataba, I have not experienced the benefits of living in the city. The only thing I've experienced is the higher cost of living. For people in your annexation area, my heart goes out to them as they face the bureaucracy of city government. I am thankful these folks have the board of supervisors, Chevron, the City of Moss Point, and others in opposition. From my experience, cities need to stay inside their limits and focus on serving their residents and leave the folks who choose to live in rural areas rural. And that concludes Mr. DeAngelo's letter.
Our third speaker is Ms. Lisa Cannon. So Lisa, if you want to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Speak on your own behalf.
Lisa Cannon, I reside in the community of Forts Lake, which is also just north of the annexation area. Your annexation plan claims to increase city revenues and lower taxes for your current Pascagoula residents, as well as improving fire ratings that would reduce property insurance for those in the annexed areas. You are stating that the lower rating would offset the additional taxes the citizens in the proposed area would pay to Pascagoula, and I did speak to Justin Larson about this, and that's exactly what he stated. However, according to my research, city fire ratings have little to do, really nothing to do, to determine the ratings in the newly annexed area. Achieving a better rating requires more than just annexation. It does require things such as adequate staffing, equipment, stations, and station proximity to residents, water systems, hydrants, and strict enforcement of fire prevention codes inside your proposed annexed area. The annexed residents will pay a higher tax well before any potential rating change, and expanding coverage could stretch resources very thin for Pascagoula. That could result in lowering the Pascagoula fire rating, and that could result in actually an increase in fire costs for insurance for your current residents. Meeting requirements and firefighter numbers, protective gear, training, infrastructure installation, and record-keeping require significant investment by the city. In short, the annexation may increase costs and strain services resulting in negative impact to your current residents. It is unlikely that the higher taxes would be offset by reduced insurance rating for the new residents. You're attempting to sell your higher taxes with an empty promise of lower fire insurance cost. As I stand, I stand in opposition. I'll also point out that part of that strain, you're going from a fifteen-mile radius city to a forty-point-two-mile radius, and to do that overnight is going to stretch your budget, it's going to stretch your personnel. I don't see you being able to achieve that, and I've got a detail, more detail than what I just spoke on, then I will leave with Ms. Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Paula Dunagan.
Hello, there we go. Mine will be short and to the point. My name is Paula Dunagan. We live on William Street in Pascagoula. We're expressing concerns that we have had at our, on our street. Over about September of two thousand twenty, we requested an inspection of a suspected sinkhole. Running from seventeen-oh-two William Street down to ours in seventeen-oh-eight, there was three men came by from the road department to inspect it, and they determined that, yes, it was a sinkhole, but we were told that we could not have anything done until some more revenue started coming in with taxes that year. So several times, they had filled the hole with different materials such as gravel, sand, and possibly pieces of concrete, but the hole continues to spread down the street and now covers the distance of three yards, three houses. And I'm personally not qualified to determine if this is a serious problem or not. However, since it is very, very visible, you can understand that we are concerned. So, and then the ditch behind our house, our yard backs up to the parking lot of the clocked-out bar, so that ditch back there is really bad. Now, that's a lot of reasons. Some weather events, you know, that we've had, and, you know, just different things, people coming out there in the woods, and I don't know that we've actually, I haven't talked to anybody about it. But anyway, we also requested a street light out there about, about six years ago, and it took about six or seven weeks for us to get an answer. We were told we could not put it in the front, so we had to put it in the backyard. We pay that bill every month, but it's in our yard, and then the bar also gets the benefit of our security light. It's not a lot of money, it's only like twenty-three dollars a month, but the issue was, we thought we were gonna get to put it somewhere else. So then the city came out, they told me to call me city power, so I did, and then the city came out one night. It was a police officer actually came out, and he said that they just did not deem that we needed a street light on our street. We kinda really do, but anyway, that's another story, but, you know, we just kinda like for somebody to pick up where they left off, you know, and like I say, the sinkhole, it may not ever do anything, it may just stay like it is, but it's very visible in our front yard right now, and it's coming down the street, so that's my concerns, and that's part of the reason I'm just concerned about the annexation. I don't know, you know, what we'd be looking at, but that's all the concerns I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunagan.
Ms. Dunagan, it's, it's in your front yard or it's on the street?
What is the word, like, yard?
Okay.
It's running all the way down from the corner, this forest at the corner, and they've already come out and put some stuff in the, you know, the street there and things, but it's coming on down the street.
Okay.
And our last speaker is Mr. David Gregory.
I live at one-two-one-one-three Greens Ferry Road. That's out of the annexation area. I got forty-one-twenty-seven Seal Tater Road, forty-twenty-four Seal Tater Road, eighty-five-oh-five Bayou Columbus Road, and several more addresses, I ain't gonna bore you with them, in the annexation part. I'd like to start out tonight with a story. I went up down there to Orange Beach to this big condo complex, and the guy carried me in there, and showed me all the pools and the hot tubs and the beach and the security he had to drive in, and it was all nice. I mean, it's fantastic. Four pools, hot tubs, hot tubs on the bathrooms, grills on the bathrooms. He had me drinking the Kool-Aid. I was fixing the sign on the dotted line, and I said, boy, my kids is really gonna enjoy this. He said, whoa, Mr. Gregory. He said, you can be a part of this complex, but we don't have no room for your kids no more. There's no room in these pools, we overlaid it. And I said, oh, man, that's gonna be a deal-breaker right there. So that story's made up. The place is real, this is the Torquay's over on Orange Beach, real nice place. That reminds me, that story is to say the City of Pascagoula wants to annex me. Well, they tell me that they gonna give me a lower insurance. Well, I don't have insurance. They gonna, I can't, my youngins can't go to school. I do have a nine-year-old youngin', but he wouldn't go to school here anyways, I mean, so I had to raise some youngins down here, but he wouldn't be allowed to come to school down here. There's probably not a hundred kids in that whole annexed area, because there's only seven hundred people, three hundred and seventy-two homes, so probably only a hundred kids. I don't know how to check that out now. The police, boy, I, I'm scared to talk about the police in here, because I've been in that jail down there one time twenty-some years ago, looking through that little wamp. So I gotta watch what I say. So y'all building a, y'all building a substation now, so if you think you're gonna annex, you need to move it on out there closer, because I can't talk about the sheriff's department, because John Ledbetter, I know him real well, and he's got a cell for me, too, and so I ain't gonna talk about neither one of them, but, you know, that's, I don't know who's the fastest. The taxes, yeah, my taxes are gonna go up, but my appraisal ain't, because right now, when I try to sell something out there, the City of Moss Point, nobody wants a kid to go to Moss Point, I'm sorry if I hurt anybody's feelings, but they don't want him to go to Moss Point, so that ain't gonna make the value of my, man, that was quick, you sure that thing's right?
That was three minutes. Go ahead and finish, finish your thought.
So anyway, so.
You don't, you don't want your kids going to Moss Point School?
No, no, I meant, y'all, I meant, anyways, I'll, I'll come back, I mean, that's just a.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about the consent agenda? Next, we have the consent agenda. Does any member of the council have any questions about the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I believe I will excuse myself and I'll stick to the other two.
You're welcome to leave at any point. You don't need to excuse yourself. Anyone who's here certainly is welcome to leave. Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment, if that's okay, is on the, I've had some questions regarding the lease for city, the temporary city hall. And I just wanted to note that our city manager has done a lot of research on trying to find an appropriate facility for, to make sure that we had enough office space for everybody, and that he's researched several different facilities, and that he's also negotiated a price within fair market value. And so thank you, Justin, for that. But I just, I had some people asking me if it was within fair market value and that kind of thing, and I just would like the public to know that that research has been done, and it is in within fair market value.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the city manager's agenda items. Mr. Larson.
Sir, I have two items tonight. Item 9A is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Main Street Pascagoula. The MOU provides that the City of Pascagoula will annually provide $125,000 to Main Street Pascagoula, and that these funds will be utilized for various recreational activities such as parades, festivals, and other events.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Main Street Pascagoula?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next item, Mr. Larson.
Item 9B is a resolution approving agreement with Casio Sanford Government Law Group. The City of Pascagoula is proposing to retain Casio Sanford Government Law Group, PLLC, for consulting government relations and lobbying services. Our lobbyists, Sandy Sanford and Tamara Casio, have been a great asset to the city, helping us with our legislative needs, and we are proposing renewal of their contract. They requested no increase to their current fee.
Do we have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the agreement with Casio Sanford Government Law Group?
So.
One question on that. Will they be coming and giving us an update soon?
Yeah, they just want, I didn't give them enough notice for this one, but they will, y'all. They normally, I think they'd like to do that right before the legislative session, so we'll, so we'll have them come for sure.
Karen, did you get that motion a second?
I didn't get a second.
There's two over here.
I'll second it then.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, can you just give us an update on the things that they've accomplished over the last 12 months or since they?
Well, during the, you know, during legislative session, we're pretty much in talk with them. Before we, before the session starts, they come and meet with the city to find out what our needs are, to what we'll be looking for, what we'll be asking for. We tell them about our title lines applications, if we have any Go Mesa applications, any other legislative ask that we have. Next year, we'll be asking for funding for Lowry Island. We've been talking with them for about a year on that. Throughout the year, if things come up that we need help with legislatively, they're always, Lowry Island was one last year that we've used them a lot with. Helped us with that situation that we had there. And they, you know, speak with our legislative teams every day during that session to make sure they're pushing our needs to them. So last year, they didn't award any funds, not by, not by their fault. But I visited Jackson and met with them while we were there. And so, yeah, they've just been very helpful to us getting funding needs that we need here for the city.
GCRF.
Yeah, yeah, GCRF. They're very helpful with that. When we meet, when we put in GCRF applications, we have to go to Gulfport to present to that board. Sandy is there that day, kind of coaching of what, how that, you know, what to say, how to present that to there. So, yeah, their value's been, to me especially, has been great this last year.
They have done a great job. They've been so good for us, so.
Do we expect any legislative needs other than funding for them to work on this year? Do we know of any?
That's all we have right now.
That's not, nothing's been discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can certainly do that, but there's nothing been discussed.
That's all we had last year was basically just funding needs that we need, you know, going over our title lines and going over the GCRF asks as well.
And these two lobbyists are so well-respected for, in the state capital, for what they do. They are there every day. Sandy Sanford is a Pascagoula native. He grew up here. He knows the town. He knows so much about what our situation is. And again, they, they campaign on behalf of the city day after day. And our legislators tell us we are doing a good job keeping them working for us.
Yep. Yep.
Any other questions? Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have the city attorney's agenda items. Mr. Moore.
I have one item tonight. This is a ordinance that, it's an issue that Mr. Church brought to my attention that in measuring the distance between establishments and some alcohol from churches, parks, and schools, there are two different measurements provided in the ordinance. So this is to take one out, so it's just consistent about how we're going to measure. So instead of a straight line under this, it would be clear that you go down the road to figure out the measurement from door to door for those establishments.
So this is not a change in the ordinance. It's just a clarification that's necessary because of conflicting language.
That's right. It's inconsistent the way it is.
Right. Do we have a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the code for alcohol location restrictions?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Next is the docket of claims. Are there any questions regarding the docket of claims? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
Two more. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding the docket of claims? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next is the docket of claims B. Are there any questions regarding the docket of claims B? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims B?
Slow mo.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next is the payroll docket. Are there any questions regarding the payroll docket? Do we have a motion to approve the payroll docket?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding the payroll docket? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have mayor council items. Are there any mayor council items at this time? Councilman Stallworth, we'll start with you. Anything you'd like to bring up?
No, sir.
Mr. Foyle, Councilman Fournette.
Yes, I was speaking to one of the other council members, and I just think it's a good idea for the City of Pascagoula to require the citizens to have lids on their garbage cans. And the reason why I say that is because some people don't, and then once they have them filled, trash goes everywhere. All it does is cause drainage issues. Maybe during the months when the wind is blowing, I see it all the time. So I just think we should be required, they should be required to have lids on their garbage cans, on garbage bins.
Michael, is that something that you can look into and draft?
I'll look at, that may already exist, but I'll.
Maybe we just need to enforce the ordinance we have regarding that sort of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I see it all the time. That's all I'm saying.
Are these like non, they're non?
No, these are garbage bins from Waste Pro, but what happens in, eventually the lids are broken.
It's just when they deteriorate just from use.
Yes, from, yes, right.
Years of use. And I think we just need to find out, and I think this is the case, but I don't want to misspeak.
Call in for them.
That, I think they'll replace it if you contact them. So I think it's just getting clarity on what that is, and then I think maybe an opportunity for us to communicate to citizens to let them know.
Waste Pro needs to be replaced if they were damaged. They put on a list with garbage trucks. They haven't done that quite.
Right. So I see, I see a lot of that, and it's Pascagoula, so I just think it'd be good that we could.
Who oversees the solid lease contract? Can you just contact Waste Pro and ask them to do a survey?
They're receptive to anything we ask for. So, yeah.
Very good.
I think it cleans us up a little bit, and it takes care of some of the clog, it's when we end up within those drain bases or those storm drains, so I think it's good.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Young, anything on your mind this evening?
I have a couple things. One is that I had promised Michael that I would bring him some information from MML, and I never did. So I figured I'd give it to everybody. One is the, it's about property cleanup fees, and there's some information from South Mississippi Planning and Development District. It's, they have a organization within their purview called the Mississippi Intercept Company. And it's where we can turn in fines, traffic tickets, utility bills, property cleanup fees, and other things. As long as the debt is 60 days past due, we can turn it in to them, and they will run it up through the state channels. And if there is income, if they're due an income tax refund, we will get their income tax refund before they get their income tax refund. So I wanted to bring you that information so you could look at it, or Justin, whoever. And then the other is, there's just a page, and you'll have to excuse my notes on it, but it's from MML or from some, a class that I went to that talks about House Bill 733 that is also enabling legislation for grants through the Land Records Management Fund to help clean up tax forfeited properties. So if you have properties that have been turned over to the state, there's a, I have not looked up the bill, I read the information they handed us, but there's up to $2,500 that we can get from first tax forfeited properties. So I just thought that might be a tool that we could use to help collect some of these fees. And I had told Michael I was going to bring it to him, and I didn't, so I figured tonight was a good time.
We mentioned it last time, and I forwarded that this week to try to get more information on it, so.
Okay. Yeah, these are like a little flyer, basically, so there's not a great deal of information on it.
Twenty, $2,500 total?
$2,500 per property.
Per property, okay.
Of the tax forfeit, the ones that get tax forfeited to the state.
State.
Mm-hmm. So just a potential revenue source for us, either way. Then I wanted to ask about the update on the paving list. I know I submitted some roads to be paved. Are we ready to get a list to the county or?
Not quite. Not quite yet. I mean, still working on the list.
Okay. So when should, so I saw Ken today. When should we expect that to?
Well, they're still coming to pave off of the old list, so they're, they're going to be completing that before they move to the new list, but they have asked that we give them our new list, so as soon as possible.
But that's District 2 supervisors' funding. This is District 3 supervisors' funding.
Yeah, so as soon as possible, as soon as I get some more streets.
Okay. Does everybody need more time to turn in their streets?
Yeah, I do.
But I think the interesting thing that people don't understand is it comes down to what streets the individual supervisors choose to pay. Isn't that correct, Councilman Parker?
Well, I mean, they, they take our list to work.
They take our list and, and pull off of it and then add to it. So certainly, we give them, you know, what we believe needs to be done, and they have, they sometimes don't do what we ask them to do, so.
Sure, and I understand that. It's their district. It's their area they're representing as well. But if we don't give them a list, then they're not going to.
Yeah. We get them, we get them, we get them a good list every year.
Yeah, they got a list every year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but sometimes it's not fair, if you ask me, because there's a street that was paved in war or two that was on the paving list, and I was, I'm letting the supervisor know this street has already been paved. He just paved it, you know, a year and a half, two years ago, so.
Why would he do it again?
Yeah, well, don't, well, take this list.
We resolved that.
Yeah, well, I told him what street to pave. I asked him what street to pave, and I gave him a couple of the streets, and he said, "Well, I'm not going to do it right now. We're going to do it next time around." Well, where does, does the money go for that street that you were going to pave? We only get three or four streets paved. I see other wars with 10, 11, 12 streets. So I just don't think it's fair the way things have been going with that, but that's just the truth, so. If you, if you gave him another street, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow.
No, 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 we just resolved taking that street off.
Okay. But what did he add to it, though? Because that's a pretty long street. That's what I'm saying. So we get nothing out of it. So, you know, that, that doesn't make sense to me. So there are streets.
Every, every, yeah. Supervisor.
Say it again?
That's why we need a supervisor.
Yeah, well, I mean, listen, we have to get them to do the right thing, because, you know, people don't want bad streets. And if you're going to take one street and don't pave it, give it somewhere else, you know, in that war. Taxpayers, they deserve it.
Can we commit to, and I'm happy to go with anyone, since I've got the geography same as Jay, but can, can we kind of set a tentative deadline that we would get everything to Justin? Because a week enough, two weeks?
A week is enough for me.
And I'm happy to help. I'm happy to go with you. I mean, I.
Yeah, me too. I can ride around.
I mean, obviously, we do need to prior, prioritize them, so we may need to discuss it next, next council meeting just to make sure we're all aligned.
Once I get the streets, the plans for James and I to go hit, hit all of them and verify that there's no active projects coming up, that we wouldn't want to pave a street that we're going to then tear up a year later. And so we'll, we'll look over the list, write, write the streets and verify them, and then solidify that list and let y'all look over it before we submit it.
Okay. But two weeks' work?
Well, we won't need again till the first part of October, right?
The 7th, yeah, October 7th. But that'll give us time to get the list in. If we, if we can get the list in in a week, that'll give us time to then vet the list and make a final list, and then we'll get that list to you guys to look over for that meeting.
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah, because basically, Mr. Moore's had about a million dollars in paving.
1.1, supposedly.
Yeah. And paving has gone off a lot, so it depends, I mean, you could say, you know, one street depends on how long the street is, how wide the street is, how thick it is, how much they have to mill, you know, all that expense goes into that.
Right, I understand. That's exactly true.
But the, the list that I saw said 2023 on it, so it's been at least a couple of years since we've given them a list.
Right, right.
But they're working through that list from 2023 until it's completed before they will go on further.
I think we should reevaluate them every year. I mean, situations change every year.
When the first guy elected, something happened with the company that they were using at the time, and then they had to go out for bids to find another company, which put, in that particular area, we were the last ones on the list to get paving out of the county, and it put us behind probably two years.
Right.
Yeah, it was a big mess when the Allen Brothers split.
Anything else, Ms. Young?
No.
Councilman Parker, anything for you?
I'm good.
Councilman Bly.
I talked to Justin about this today, and I know you're talking to Public Works. And I know at one time we talked about that we were going to replace a lot of fire hydrants throughout the city.
Yeah.
Up on North Pascagoula Street, and I know we talked about this, there appear to be two that are leaking pretty good. Where are we far as getting that done or starting that process?
Y'all approved the contractor last week.
Okay.
I don't ask you, right, or do we approve for going out for bids for that one?
No, the bids have been received and opened. We had an apparent low, but it was an internal mistake, so it was no work.
Ah, yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, so we're, we're there. We're close, but we've got.
It hasn't come down.
And it's not just Pascagoula Street. There's a lot of hydrants that need to be serviced or replaced.
Yeah. We've gotten that far, though, so we're pretty far along in it.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman Bly?
Oh, no, sir.
Councilwoman Brandon Stein?
I was just going to mention, not for, anything for us to resolve right now, but we're kind of like everybody's thoughts. I think all of us have been getting a variety of questions about properties and cleanups and grass heights and such. It may be worthwhile for us just to look a little bit more at, you know, the process, the timing, because I know a lot of citizens have been asking, okay, well, you know, why does it take so long? And I know that there are certain things and steps that have to be taken, so I think it may be worthwhile just for us to talk through that, understand exactly what goes into it, so that we can, you know, help educate residents of what that looks like. Or we may look at it and say, oh, well, do we need to look at this again? Do we need to strengthen this? So I just, I think just food for thought, we may, you know, want to talk about that a little bit more. Don't have to do it right now, but.
And I'd like to specifically look at the ordinance relating to people parking on the grass.
Very good. When we have that discussion, we also need to have enforcement actions that include fines after a certain period of time, once someone is notified that they are not in, within code. within code, and those fines being enforced and collected, as you said, perhaps, MML, but that's just neither here nor there. Anything else? Next week, we have the governor, Governor Reeves, is going to be here. We're doing a celebration downtown for his participation and support of all of the downtown renovation projects through PRA. I'm sure Lindsey's going to be getting more information out for that press release event type, type situation. We'll be proud that Governor Reeves has chosen to come to Pascagoula and celebrate our successes in, in that area. Next is executive session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for executive session?
Motion and second.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That concludes the public portion of our agenda.